...City Plaza. And then after that, we will go into closed sessions. So at this point, anyone wishing to speak, you are welcome to come up here right now. We have three minutes. Yes?
I think just two quick-
Yes, that's fine.
Two good points. Kind of reiterate what we spoke about before. In dealing with these new projects that I know we all need and want in our city, two things. Make sure that we get fair market value for our land and make sure that these projects include property taxes. Without the property taxes, we're giving everything away. So those are the two things that I stress.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Casino, for interest and I'll be telling you public communication flows. Alright, so at this point, we'll go into the first presentation that we have. The, well, which should we do first?
We're ready to do the workshop.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilwoman Rubio, Councilwoman Cruz, and Ms. Foia, and Ms. Yelson.
Thank you.
And Danny and I, just to, we have PowerPoint, and it's five quick slides. But the essence of what Danny and I have been working with in conjunction with Scott Tranceu, who is the senior executive for Southland Transitting. I believe at least since 1997, Southland Transit has been operating the Pumpkin and Teal lines. I don't know if they can call Pumpkin and Teal-
Yeah.
Well, I, one day I'll ask how he got up, who's the name's Pumpkin and Teal, but be it as it may. So we, for the last three months, we've really, you know, peeled the layers off this operation to see, and this is the most important thing in everything that we do, is there a cost savings opportunity that, if implemented, will have no negative impact on service levels? That's the most important, I mean, you know, needless to say. So, this is not on PowerPoint, but everyone I think should be pretty much familiar with it. It's a map of your transit operation. And one of the things that we found out that some people didn't know, I certainly didn't know it for obvious reasons, is that, right now, you have, during weekdays, you have six buses. Basically, three, the Pumpkin line, let's say goes counterclockwise, and the Teal line goes clockwise. Basically, three are circling to the left and three are circling to the right. There are approximately 50 stops where passengers, residents of town, get on and get off. And most are going, you know, to the shopping areas. And it's a great service to the citizenry. So really, what we, and we'll go through the slides. Here's the key findings and conclusions. We estimated $195,000 to $240,000 a year in savings. And then years one through three, if you multiply 195 times three and 240 times three, you get the 585, 720. And five years, you know, same math. So that's, you know, that's the key findings. Now, we'll just go to the next slide, Danny. We'll show you how we come about that. So, the project goals, as I alluded to, was to deliver significant recurring cost savings, deliver enhanced recurring revenue streams, preserve and expand expected service levels, ensure passenger safety and comfort, and protect affordable route fares. Okay. There are two main ways. Now, route engineering is, and we did the metrics on this. So, right now, you have six buses on weekdays and approximately three to four buses on weekends, because weekends, it's a lighter service. So, on very recent data, we did an analysis. Now, these buses seat between, there are two different type of buses, between 26 and 28 people, and they can stand another 20. And mind you, people are getting on and off. So, you know, it's not as if 40 people get on at the first stop and get off at a shopping center. So constantly getting on and off. And so what we did, we had the breakdown for each of the routes, how many people are paying fares. There's two fare structures. Currently, there's 40 cents for senior citizens and people with a disability, kids are free, and adults are paying 80 cents. Okay? The ridership is approximately, and the slide has it, like 242,000 people a year paying customers, because there's some kids sitting in laps with mom and dad, whatever. So it's 242,000 paying customers. Approximately 90% are the adult fare, and so that'd be like 236,000 or so. And about 10%, and we got all this data from Southland Transit, about 10% are handicapped or senior citizens who are paying the 40 cents. So that's the metric on that. So, the route engineering, we found that these buses, let's start with this, because the same holds true, Mayor, for the weekend. So you have six buses looping around, three to the left, three to the right. Basically, I think they started about on weekdays, maybe 10 of seven, something like that. They go till, some days, between 9:00 and 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night. I mean, that's, you know, the hours of operation. We have found that those buses are running at about 20% capacity. It's, so, we're paying for a lot of buses to be going around much, you know, much less than full. So if you did the math on this, it takes about an hour to do the whole loop with the stops. As I said, there are 50 potential stops, but they would only stop if someone asked to get on or is getting on and off. I believe there are about 15 stops that they stop at anyway, maybe waiting a few seconds for people to get to the stop. So that's sort of the on and off theory here. So, in essence, going from approximately, and we're working with Southland to really get this precise, going from approximately six to four during the weekdays, and approximately two and a half, from four to two and a half on weekdays, the capacity, based on the real-time data we have, which is from this summer, May and June, shows that at the busiest peak hours, for example, during weekdays, I, and in this report, which, again, Governor, we had that breakdown, I think, you know, it's like between 12 and 2 o'clock, I think, are the busiest hours. A little lighter in the mornings and obviously at the end of the day. So, right now, if you think about it, it takes an hour, either going clockwise or counterclockwise, to do the complete route. You know, maybe a little longer, slower, depending on people on it. You know, the bus probably travels all over, I don't know, eight miles an hour. You know, it's a slow city bus. So, what we, so theoretically, every 10 minutes, a bus is going by. By reducing that by a couple of buses to approximately four, and why I say approximately, to make the savings, and this is approximately $195,000, that's, I'll call it the route engineering, the reduction, because some of it involves lunch hours of employees, we're trying to pack this, make this as efficient possible. Even at the busy hours, we would still be less than 50% capacity on these buses. So, by going to approximately four, it'd be about every 15 minutes. I mean, just the math, you have four buses going around instead of six. So the savings, the $195,000, it really comes about through three things. Southland needs, you know, less labor, less gas, less maintenance on the buses, because they're running, you know, less. So, that is the savings opportunity. Point two, and I want to do the math on that. Can we go to the next slide, Danny, because I think I might have that? Okay. So, right now, if you look where it says current fares, it's the second box, 40 cents for senior disability, 80 cents for adults, and children are free. So we had, I was a little off, you had 236,040 total fare-paying customers. That was the most recent fiscal year, July 1, 13, to June 30 of 14. And this is all from Southland Transit. People pay either cash, or they can buy coupons or tokens. I guess they're sold various places, you know, around town. So, we have suggested, and it's, you know, to you, the council, the last fare increase was in August of 2008, so it's more than six years ago. It was approximately 10 and 20 cents then. So, the suggestion for your consideration is raising the 40 cent fare to 50 cents and the 80 cent fare to a dollar. That will raise, and if you do the math, you can see we've done the math already, it raises approximately $45,000 on that. So, that is how we achieve those two savings. Can we go to the next slide? Please, Dan, thank you. So there you go, that has the math. Approximately $45,000. Who have the next slide? Please, thank you. Okay. So, it's, in terms of, if you authorize this, the next steps would be working with Southland. There'd be a contract. Right now, you're contract, which I believe you're in the, entering the second year of a five-year agreement. I think it was Mayor last summer was, I don't know if it was June, that was year of 2013. So you have four years, and then there's also, I believe there's two two-year extensions in that agreement. And the extensions are the same pricing methodology, but they'd be subject to a cost of living increase, because obviously, you know, you can't lock in a price six, eight years down the road. So, really, what would have to be done in terms of logistics would be to post the new routes and schedule of the new fares. And we believe, you know, December 1, I like to be aggressive, because if, you know, it's sort of the tendency in life, if we said March 30, it would be, you know, April. So, all likelihood, you know, a December-January timeframe is realistic for this to occur. Is there another slide, Dan?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
And so I just, you know, the importance is to keep this very affordable. Number two, to, not only affordable, but also for your residents. I mean, you know, you know, to save a lot of money, you could go from six buses to one bus, but, you know, it'd be overcrowding and, you know, people'd be waiting 45 minutes. That's, that's not the purpose of public transportation. We think this is a very, very healthy balance. And the money that could be saved, since you are funded by, is it the LA metro region sales tax, which is spent in your town, it's a formula. Interestingly enough, in some towns recently, I read about, that those sales tax revenues actually are not covering the costs of, I mean, not in your town, I'm not saying that in some other towns. So what some towns are actually forced to do is to dip into their operational budgets to, you know, make up that shortfall. And what would, you know, your prerogative and your wisdom as a council would be to decide on these savings, where to do it. It has to be transit-related. I'm not an expert on California transit law, but certainly whether it's buying new buses, bus shelters, some of the other possibilities for your senior citizens. If, you know, there's an outdoor theater or concert, they certainly could take them to a venue, Hollywood Bowl, or if kids wanted to see a Dodger game. I mean, you know, there's, it has to be transportation-related. There's also possible issues, I say this, again, I'm not an expert on this, that there are, I've spoken to people about this, there are some ways that if, and, you know, I'll question, again, I'm not an expert, if some of your police do sort of transit route-related patrol, there is the possibility of offsetting some of their salaries on the transit savings. So I'd leave it at that. I'm sure in your wisdom and experience, you could come up with a long list. You don't need my advice, you know, how to spend money that's saved. That's one thing I always tell clients, whether it's a college, a hospital, our job is to shake the money tree and, you know, I don't think, Mayor, you've ever run out of good uses of money that is saved or that comes in a windfall in the town, right? You've never, never said, "What should we do?" Free ice cream every Thursday for every resident in town.
All $75,000.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Horowitz, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Just because I like to, we have already mentioned we're on the same page.
Yeah.
So, the savings for when you're just removing the two lines, would be $195,000 approximately a year?
Right.
Five to a million, nearly a million, in five years. And that's not impacting the cost of our residents, just removing the lines?
No, that's correct.
Okay, Mr., is there, you've already studied all the impacts, the routes, everything else, is there anything else that we're not seeing that we need to know?
No. In fact, if we go back, if we go back to this slide, Robert stated that it would be a reduction of two buses. The reality is, during the weekdays, it's one bus, one out of the six buses. If we get rid of one out of the six buses, on the weekend routes, if we get rid of one out of the four buses. So, we would make sure that whatever bus is removed is the bus with the lightest ridership, whether that's Pumpkin or Teal, depending on the, on the day of the week. And the, the only impact would be maybe a little additional waiting time for somebody to bus stop.
And by the way, Councilwoman, is that, you know, the other thing is, there are so few people on these other buses, you know, I mean, you have six buses now circling, you know, around. There's one other, if I might add, we took it out of the presentation because it was a contingent revenue opportunity. And that pertains, I've been speaking with the largest company that does bus stop, bus shelter advertising, CBS JC DeKalb. You've seen all over, you see in malls, you see all of that. It's a joint venture of CBS and JC DeKalb, a French company. And they're very interested, and this would be a net revenue and a possibility, continue about $30,000 a year of new revenues. However, the caveat is that right now, in Los Angeles County and in other parts of the country, there's a glut of billboards and advertising space. So they need some time to absorb that. So that would be something we could, we look, we look at, I don't think it's good English. Revisit, thank you. I'm sorry to Mrs. Flay, my eighth grade English teacher, if she could hear me now, to revisit that first quarter of 2015.
Because I know right now, I mean, we're all concerned, I mean, I can speak for all of us, they were concerned going to be raising the rates on passengers, but, you know, that could be a separate conversation. To me, I just don't see why we can't explore or immediately implement removing the two buses, so that's not going to impact our residents and we can attain $195,000 a year. I personally make the motion to do that immediately.
Let me just say, so that, portion of those grants that comes to the general fund?
Nothing comes from the general fund. Transit's completely funded by Proposition A funding.
So Proposition A, so then basically, so in essence, can that, can Proposition A be utilized elsewhere?
It can be just transit-related. So, we could, if you guys wanted to have, I've heard discussion of a bus line that goes to Mount Sack, say. I mean, $195,000, $195,000 shouldn't be able to pay-
Or even, or even, Mayor, buying a new bus. I mean, one of the nice things, just to give you a little, you know, you know, you know, one of the advantages, if that's the right word, or the other benefits that comes from paring down some existing buses, is that some of your buses are getting pretty old now. So, instead of theoretically having six going around every day, cutting that back to four or five, you know, the right number, you know, you're able to rotate, you know, and extend the lives of those buses. Now, I know there's also separate, and Danny knows this pretty well, and Mark does, some opportunities for grants, you know, through some of the state funds for, you know, CNG buses, you know, and that.
I thought we converted one of them to a CNG bus, didn't we?
We do, we currently, half of our fleet are CNG buses.
Which is, by the way, is, you know, for all sorts of things, I'm telling you.
Also, I think, you know, in the savings, remember that it had been discussed a while back of getting that little, like a trolley, you know, not a real trolley, but you know, that looks like a trolley.
We've actually received a grant for that through Caltrans, and that is, we're waiting to get the funding letter from them on that, but we have been awarded that.
Well, what it'll do-
I personally think that's ugly, but.
No, well, it'll look like the old red car that-
Well, Almane has it.
Yes, and so does Monrovia. But we were thinking, it had been discussed that it might give the people at Kaiser a chance to come over the bridge to ease-
Yeah, a tricycle.
Yes. See, if the trolley would pick them up, the bus, or whatever you want to call it, the transportation would pick them up and bring them here. You know, it could, it had been discussed with some of the businesses of giving them like a 20% discount or 10% buy, whatever it is, so that that way it would make it interesting for them to come here, because there's nothing on that side of town for people that are waiting for either their patients or family members or whatever it is, and even staff at Kaiser. Think of all the people that would-
No, that's true.
Yeah, and we also, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but we also have this best part to this, the possibility of using it for special events. For example, they have the farmerage market, and a lot of people can make it back and forth because the routes are just different. And you take the trolley and you make sure that there is transportation to these special farm events.
You know, also, also, council folks.
Council folks.
Council folks, I don't know, because I was saying, council man, council woman, I got, you know, I, there's a council men and council women. But one of the other things, and this is really where you have to juggle, I mean, listen, I understand, I serve on a school board back then, you know, in New Jersey, is, you know, is raising any type of rate. And that, you know, one of the things to possibly think about, if that's a direction, and it's a very minor increase, but I know for some people, you know, 50 cents a week is, you know, or a dollar, five extra dollars, is that that source of additional revenue, that $45,000, to be, you know, utilized for some very specific program that the, you know, that serves a segment of the population, I'd be very grateful to have that. So, I mean-
And just for the record, it's not that I'm opposing that, that's something I would consider, it's just that, you know, I heard you saying, well, you know, we're going to bring it back at a later time. I just don't see something so immediate, why we can't do it right now. If you wanted to discuss the rates, I would be open to coming back, only because it impacts our, our community. But, again, removing the lines, to me, I don't see what it's way. It's something that we see immediately and it doesn't affect our community. So, again, I would make the motion to go ahead and talk a little bit.
Yes, Mayor.
Well, I second it, Susan. You know that I've been trying to save whatever we can and discuss it on many occasions, but is there a possibility that, is this cost-effective for the buses to be traveling all over Ball Park at the same time, in a sense? I know they're going in some opposite directions.
Yeah, I'll say this, I'll say-
But, you know, you got Arrow Highway and whatever, and-
That, that's, I, I-
You got Kaiser-
When Danny and I spoke to Scott Tranceu, let me get it, and Daniel, is that, you know, what we do right now might not be the best based on the data. I mean, what Scott was saying, I asked, where are most people getting on? Most people in the town are getting on and going to the shopping areas, you know, the Walmart area and then some of the other streets. So, you know, what we're doing now, I mean, would be the opportunity, you know, for Danny and Scott and, you know, the membership here, to take a hard look and say, just because we're doing it this way, might not, in essence, still be the best way. And, you know, I can only tell you from New York, you know, the difference, I mean, if you take the buses in New York, first of all, I mean, you know, if you, you're like this, and I understand, but, I mean, those, I mean, that's a busy city where four and a half million people a day are taking the buses or the subways. I mean, those buses are not coming every nine minutes. I mean, you know, it's, you know, going from 10 to 15 minutes is still a wonderful, you know, and then, by the way, that assumes 15 minutes, it also assumes that the person just got there when the bus just left, you know? I mean, you know, because if you do the sort of metrics of it, you know, mine left five minutes ago, so it'll be like another six minutes, you know what I'm saying, about that.
That makes sense. Alright, so there's a motion.
I saw it.
Okay, alrighty. So at this point, we're gonna, the motion is to remove two of the, to really, to value engineers correctly.
It's one, it's one more, it's one, it's one during the week and one on the weekends.
Yeah. And you think that that's not going to impact the-
Well, I know it won't impact, and, you know, it might, I just want to say that in doing this, I would like the motion to say one to two on the weekdays, because it, you know, to get the back and forth, one to two and one to two.
Why don't we give staff the flexibility?
That's what I'm saying. The most important concern is that we're not going to have residents waiting a half hour to catch a bus. And that's what, when we come back to say, here's a decision, we'll come back with some numbers and metrics to say to you, here's what it's going to look like.
Alright, so then-
And we also, I'm sorry, we also, remember, have the dialer line, you know, people don't realize that we also have that available. I don't know, from what I understand, you have to call, like, the day before or something in order to, but you still, but you still have that possi-
Right, and we're not touch-
We're not touched, that means, thank you, that means untouched.
Yeah, but you still have that option, see? So it's not where the people are going to be standing out there in the pouring rain and nobody's coming, I mean, you know? And besides, where does it rain in Southern California?
Yeah, that's right. You got an eighth of an inch the other day, didn't you?
Alright, so then at this point, we're just gonna, we're gonna allow, have the staff assess and elevate.
Yeah, because ultimately, what would have to happen is a new contract that, you know, Danny and I and Bob and Shannon review to make sure it includes everything that we're expecting to be included, and the routes, you know, because those are two things.
For the changes in the route, since this is federally, there are federal funds involved in Prop A money, we will have to do some public hearings and some outreach to our riders in order to, in order to explain this to them and to have a chance to hear back from them as to, as to how, you know, how that's going to impact them, so.
So at this point, I'm looking forward to giving you that authority to work on.
And also, I think, you know, I don't know if you need to say this, but to not only come back and say, what is the correct amount of buses, but also, you know, the experts might come back and say, based on the ridership, we, we don't think it's necessary to have, you know, two and a half buses going to the left and two and a half to the right. There might be some adjustments based on the actual passenger patterns that might more efficiently, you know, result in ridership, you know, getting to the destinations quicker.
I have one more question to go forward, and going back to the increase in the rates, is that something that we need to also have a hearing for and do outreach for?
Yes. If, if, if the council gives me the direction to go ahead with a fair increase at some point in the future, there are public hearings and outreach to the riders to receive their input on that.
And the reason I'm saying this is that if we're directed and staff to go and work on this, I mean, do you want them doing it twice? You know, we do this, and then we come back, decide that maybe we do want to, I mean, increase the rates, and then we send them out to do what we can. You know, that here is, if I were a resident, that would sound to me like, here we go, they're raising it again. It would sound like two times the rates, two times the impact. If you do it together, it would be one time and they wouldn't feel so overwhelmed.
If you give, that's a really good point, Danny, that you're, that you're all making. If you give the authorization, if you get the authorization to do something, it doesn't mean you have to do it also.
No.
Correct.
Can we just move forward and see?
You want to combine them?
Yeah, because then you're gonna have to pull them twice.
Yeah, the side, and then bring it back to us.
And you can make that decision.
So, I'll make my motion. Yes, I will fix my motion, answer any rates, just so we can explore.
Yeah, no, second to me, that's a good idea.
Alright, anything else there?
May I make a point of clarification, because usually after these presentations, we always do have an issue as it relates to implementation and payment based on Mr. Horowitz's contract and things of that nature. So, my understanding that we're implementing this now, is that what the motion was?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. For the study.
Exactly, so, yes.
Something, something, because still, a contract has to be prepared and then presented, and then with all the, you know, and that would be at a point. So now we're taking a step to, to get on the diving board.
I see.
We didn't jump in the water yet.
So you're saying for your, for your contract, we have to do a lot of this?
No, I'm just saying, this is, even, you know, what we did with Southland, there's going to be a contract modification, so we have to bring that back to you-
Right.
-to review it, make sure it's exactly what we want.
So we can't implement this until we talk to Southland?
Well, we're, we're, we, yeah, we'll find that answer out.
We'll find that answer out.
Yeah.
Yeah. We may be able to implement this without going down-
Yeah, because the current contract has language that we're bootstrapping and relying on that enables, the current contract enables us to reduce the routes by a certain percentage and receive a economic benefit. So, that, that might, you know, be the bootstrap that we don't, that we can do that immediately.
So just for clarification, as it leads to Mr. Horowitz, you can't do anything until we have actual numbers and actual contract, then we decide how to implement that, correct?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be continued.
Yes.
Alright, okay, so I guess we're gonna prepare for the other, the mixed-use project proposal that we have, a group of potentially residential projects.
Mr. Wall.
Thank you. Thank you.
He's Mr. Wall.
Mr. Wall.
This is Danny.
Can I go?
Oh, goodnight.
There you go. Is it okay if I stand up here?
Okay.
Do you see, so, can you?
I'm pretty loud.
Yeah.
Okay, let's have you. Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Matt Waken, I'm from Walburn Development, and I want to first thank you guys for taking the time to study this project and take a look at, you know, what we're proposing for the downtown. Real quick on my company, Walburn Development is a urban infill development company, primarily focusing on residential activities. Right now, we have under construction, right now, we have under construction 167-unit mixed-use project in West Hollywood on the corner of Santa Monica and Frontera.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but you said, "Thank you for taking the time to be able to review." I personally have not seen, besides what Mark Caspanola showed me, I didn't have a chance to review anything.
Oh, no, I need to review today.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, right now.
time to be able to review the, I personally have not seen, besides what Mark Caspinola showed me, I didn't have a chance to review anything.
Oh, no, I need to review it today.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, right now.
Alright.
Okay. So we've got a hundred and sixty-seven unit mixed-use project in West Hollywood, that's a podium project, it's a hundred and sixty-seven units on 1.3 acres, a very high density. We also have three hundred and twenty-five units in Laguna Nigal, which is a RAP product with parking structures, that we are building in the Laguna Nigal Gateway area. And then we've got a hundred unit project in Claremont on the corner of Foothill and One Vista, which is a redevelopment project, which is really interesting, that project is bifurcated by two cities, the city of Upland and the city of Claremont, which brings two counties into play, and we also have the airspace east and west to the middle of it. So, you know, our focus is downtown redevelopment projects. And about six months ago, Mark approached us and we were able to get a map that the city had prepared that identified eight potential downtown redevelopment opportunities within the city. We focused on opportunity number one, for a few reasons. First of all, we felt that it was right in the core and the center of downtown and presented a good opportunity in that respect. Second, it's proximity to the transit and the metro station, which is something that we look for in our developments. Right now, just along the 210 corridor and the goal line, we're negotiating on a site in Monrovia in a transit square village, which we're proposing a hundred and thirty-eight mixed-use units right along the goal line, we're also negotiating with Arcadia as well. So, you know, we work well with cities, and we love the format of coming in in a study session and presenting the projects, getting feedback, and seeing that there's some way we can do something in a public-private partnership. So, you know, this site, it's a little bit constrained from a configuration standpoint, obviously, so what we did was, we talked with the city, and one of the things we implemented was the closure of this area right here along the, which added some land to us. And, you know, what we proposed is, when we're looking at a, at a urban infill project like this, there's three project types that we can do, and this is really critical when it comes to density. If you have a certain rent threshold, you can do a podium project where you've got a concrete podium deck and you're going subterranean with your parking. To be able to, and when you do that, that maximizes units. So, when you do a project like that, you have to have rents north of three dollars a square foot. To be able to achieve a project that has subterranean parking because of the cost structure associated with it.
Out of curiosity, let me interrupt, would that be something your company's interested in subterranean parking?
No. We can't do it here, that's what, that's kind of the point I'm getting to in the way that we design it.
I think that'd be great, but, okay.
We'd like to do it, if you had three dollars a square foot rents, we would do it. And, and you know, the market here is about a dollar seventy, and the reason the market here is about a dollar seventy is because you've got a certain housing threshold on your housing prices. So, there becomes an area, it becomes a time, space where the cost to purchase a home equates to the cost to rent a home, and you can't go any higher than that, your rental rate. So, the West Hollywood project has two levels of subterranean and a podium, and we put a hundred and sixty-seven units on 1.3 acres, but our rents there are three dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot. In Laguna Nigal, we have a RAP which allows about sixty-five units per acre, we have a five-acre site, three hundred and fifty units. The RAP product needs about two dollars and fifty cents a square foot of rents to achieve that. When you're sub two dollars, you've gotta stay on grade, unless you have assistance, there's no other way, you can't afford to build subterranean or RAP products. So, we were limited in our density, but nonetheless, this is a luxury multifamily project, we managed to get thirty-eight units per acre, we have about seventy-five units on the site. We contemplated this being a market-grade project and a luxury multifamily project. We'll do the next slide. So, we talked about project summary benefits, it's a development that activates the site and invigorates the downtown corridor, bringing residents and additional disposable income to the area, I'll come back to that. It's a TOD site, takes advantage of the existing Metro Link Rail Station. There's a really interesting study prepared by the ULI, the Urban Land Institute, and talks about greenhouse gas emissions, and talks about what the state of California is trying to implement with all these expansions of the goal lines and the transit-oriented developments. And it's to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, it's to centralize the focus in the core of the development, and it's to bring residents to the downtown areas to use the public transportation and then to shop and live there. So when you have a transit stage development like this, near a transit station, not only do you have the residents that brings to the area, but you have the ancillary people that come and visit, the family, the friends, that are gonna use the transit system to come, and they're gonna spend money in Walburn Park. So that's why we love the transit developments, because they don't only, they don't only bring disposable income to the downtowns, they also bring other income to the downtowns. It contemplates capital improvements to the Civic Center Plaza, and I'm gonna touch on that, because I know that's a real important factor to the city, and in my discussions with Mark, he's talked to me a little bit about what the cities think that they want to accomplish on the site, and it could be different than this. So, we think we can work together with the city in a public-private partnership to develop something that gives some units to the area, raise some residents, gets a luxury multifamily project, we know affordable component to this, and that's the city ask for. And, and by the way, based on one of the comments we heard earlier, we plan to pay for land, we're not looking for the land for free, we'll do an appraisal and evaluate it. So there's, there is capital, a sale of the property results in cash enhancements to the city's general fund, the sales proceeds can be used for city requirements of whatever the fund can be used for, and then there's significant development fees attached to this. Michael, we go on? This talks about the unit mix, I mean, just briefly, it's a seventy-five unit project, we've got eleven studios for about fourteen percent, one bedrooms, thirty-eight percent, two bedrooms, forty-six percent. Usually the ones and the twos are about equal, but we wanted to go heavier on the two bedrooms because we felt it's a better mix to Walburn Park. This sort of shows an outline of the site, and this is, this is really parcel one, TOD site one, and then this is what we're anticipating for the civic plaza. And Michael Heinrichs here, and he's my architect, one of the things that we want to accomplish is, we wanna create and activate this site and unify it at the city hall, and create that civic plaza. So what we're, what we're contemplating is that part of the plaza extends over and then connects to the city hall, and this is something that we would work to improve and we would commit funds to improve on both sites. And this is really important, when it comes to disposable income, in one of my first meetings with Mark, one of the things he said is that, and I'm very familiar with the previous project for the downtown that was before the recession hit, and it was a billion-dollar development, like many cities, and I know that one by the wayside, but one of the things that's important in going forward and looking at all the sites that you guys have to develop, and, you know, it's interesting, most cities, like Monrovia has a transit square, and they have the same type of deal, they had twenty-five hundred units, a million square feet of commercial hotels, and it was a billion-dollar development that went in the tank, and they're doing it piece by piece, they're coming back and breaking it up, and there's one apartment project under construction. But the key is, when you look at this retail map, and the reason we provide it, is this is the walkability map for the project, and these are the retail businesses within Walburn Park, and these businesses are gonna benefit from the disposable income provided by the residents of this project. Okay, this talks about proximity to Morgan Park, and we think that's important when we're talking about incorporating a civic plaza as part of this project. I think it's important to note that we've got a ten-acre park, thousand yards away from the site, and I think it's a really critical part to Walburn Park, and I think it'd be a real complement to the city center that we can design with the city and Morgan Park. And that's just another close-up of the development. So, it's highly amenitized, seventy-five units, we don't require any financing on projects like this, we're self-financed through a private equity group that we have, and we're under construction on almost a thousand units right now in Southern California. You know, I, I think it's important, we go to the next slide too. Let's go on, we're done, we have the last one. And what we did, and we've got a follow-up, which Michael's gonna talk about briefly, we've got a follow-up slide, you know, there is some very creative and innovative ways that we can work together to design a civic plaza that gives the city what they want within the confines of city hall property and transcending across the street onto our property. I mean, there can be a really nice development here where the city's able to get some funds, get some really quality luxury apartments within the community, activate a transit-oriented development, bring disposable income to the area, and still get a really beautiful civic plaza, which we work with the city very closely, to incorporate as part of our design. Because I know that's something that's really important, and I think that it can be done together, but I think that to get the downtown area of Walburn Park activated and to utilize the transit that's here, and to get bodies and disposable income into the downtown, I think this is a really great project that it gets started with. So I wanted to, Michael, talk a little bit about the project, and then I'd love to answer the question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Michael Heinrich, I'm with Architects Orange, we do a lot of projects like, similar to this, and we actually worked on a recent project in Monrovia near Matt's site, just got the city council approval. I'd like to point out a couple of things on the plan, I know Matt's done a really good job explaining it, but we're closing, we're in part of Main Street here, but one of our ideas was to create a paseo, that would go through a landscape area here that would connect the new civic plaza back up to the park. So we think, we're proposing a paseo, maybe we've got an alleyway that we're creating here, but there might also be a paseo system that comes through here. So there's still connectivity through the site. And then I'd like to point out some of the characteristics of this type of development. There's a beautiful retail furniture with a deep sidewalk and has a lot of potential for, for future development and being a sort of linear urban space, beautiful architectural treatments around this corner here. So we wanted to create a sort of a townhome-looking edge to the project, with maybe a little pocket park for the residents, that would start to create a beautiful street scape on the back side. So we're not just talking about this, we're talking about the character of all the edges and how it could potentially work in the benefit of the city. These are particularly interesting type of units, they're called carriage units, they sit on top of the parking, so these units have parking garages and then stairs that go up to them, and we also have parking underneath these units, so it's not a full-structured parking with concrete, they're expensive, but we can build some of the parking into the building mass, and that helps remove the, make the parking field smaller and helps to densify the project. And one other thing I'd like to point out is that the city hall has a certain massing, it's a very tall building, very tall floor floors. This will be a four-story building, it has an elevator, so it's a four-story mass, and we'll work with the city hall to create a sense of a civic plaza beyond just the landscaping, you know, you'll get a sense when you arrive here that you've arrived in a place. And we can enhance that placemaking ability with how we accessorize this civic plaza. Okay. We have a vast library of source imagery, we have a lot of residential mixed-use projects, but we picked just a few of them here, up here in this area to show the different styles of architecture. Our thought was that we'd like to make a landmark civic plaza and create a very sophisticated architecture. We call this kind of style contemporary traditional, so it still has a base, a middle and a top, but it has a very contemporary statement to it. We thought that that might be appropriate for your city to, to make it stand up to other cities in terms of its sophistication and the statement we could make for that plaza. But they are just a sampling, and we can go through a process of studying different styles of architecture, working back and forth with whatever stakeholder groups are involved. Then down here are, as Matt mentioned, the street scape that we might see along the back side, maybe the paseo with seating areas, and then the plaza that is really, the civic plaza that maybe is a combination plaza and parks with a lot of unique seating opportunities for individual seating or group seating, maybe park benches where people can sit and have meetings at, things like that, so a real urbanized, accessorized urban space. And Matt touched on this briefly, but the design again could be a contemporary urban park and civic park plaza, so that a very unique kind of space, a very artistically done, and it makes it a real landmark for your city. And we can study, we just have the sampling, urban art, brought in urban art fountain, we could renovate the fountain in the city hall and incorporate it into a new design. So you really could get a state-of-the-art urban plaza for the outreach, make a statement for the city.
Well, Matt, that's a little more about your company, I know that I looked it up on the internet, and I wonder if there are projects we're doing other than in the area, right? Can you tell us a little more about those types of projects?
Sure, well, yeah, West Hollywood's under construction, that's the domain, Laguna Nigal project's in plan check, we're processing the entitlements on Claremont Avenue, because we've got doing the dispossessions that we're working on. We've got a townhome project in Arcadia that we're doing, that we're going for planning commission on the 25th of this month. That particular project, we applied for a general plan amendment as no change, and we got those, and now we're processing a project. We've got a downtown transit-oriented development, we're negotiating with the city, we were granted an E&amp;A exclusive negotiating agreement with the city on 1.5-acre downtown site, we're negotiating in Monrovia outside, we've got a project in Monrovia, which is a townhome and small lot concept, fifty units, that we're processing right now. We're in negotiations on the downtown San Diego site, which is 1.5 acres, and that would be a three hundred and fifty unit multifamily project. And what we do is, it's interesting, we're strictly, we're a developer from the horizontal sense, we work, we work really well with cities, and we have, we have significant equity behind us. So we come in and we negotiate the transaction, we land a plan and process the entitlements, and then we select a development partner, usually a very large one, in the case of West Hollywood, it's Trammell Crow Residential, they're one of the largest apartment builders in the country, they're our development partner on that project. In the case of Laguna Nigal, it's Alliance Residence for a lot of urban, another one of the largest multifamily builders in the country. So, once we get it entitled, we secure it, we close escrow on it, we provide the equity, and then we bring in our development building partner who will construct it. And that's, that's our, that's our partnership on the development.
So you're talking about your equity is of a large portfolio?
We've got, we've got about fifty high-net worth investors that I've worked with for about twenty-five years, and they originally came from my father, who was a CPA and a real estate developer, and they were his clients, and they all invested me at this time, and then we've got a Canadian fund that we worked with, plus we worked with Carney Capital and a number of different equity funds in Los Angeles, depending on the size of the deal, on a deal like this, we finance it ourselves.
Now, okay, what's the acreage on that city property?
It's about, just about two acres, two acres and something.
That's with the street.
Now, you're saying, oh, I see, you're open to either paying for it or to pay for the property, or do you have a city profit?
We pay for it, absolutely, yeah, I mean, what I understood when I talked to Mark, and I'm very transparent, is these, there's a number of sites, some are privately owned, the shopping centers, and there's a few city-owned sites, the one on Vidilla, I think it was, that the veterans, I think, were working on, the veteran housing project. Mark said that if we identify a site, and if the city council liked the site or chose to discuss the site with us, then we would mature into some plans, and then eventually we would have to get a third-party independent appraisal, and we'd have to do some pro-form on the project, and the numbers would be worked out, but we're, we probably just be acquiring the property and paying for it, yes.
Are you also open to looking at other states? I know you picked this one, it seemed to capture your interest, but are you open to looking at some of the other states, do you have a specific...
Well, we, we are, I can tell you from the sites that we have, this is the one that we like the most. You know, we liked, we liked site number four, which was the Vidilla site, for a, for a sale product, a townhome product. Six is really small, and seven and eight are great with the shopping centers, and you've got Dollar Tree, and you've got, you've got credit tenants with leases on them, and, I mean, those are sites that are gonna take time, and you've got tenants that you'd have to buy out.
Oh, you're talking about the one up right here, me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Is that what that is?
Is he selling?
I don't know.
Is that what it is?
No, he's not, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, the two best sites, the two biggest sites are the two shopping center sites.
Just to clarify, in terms of the numbering system that Matt's using, Matt is referring to the long-range property management that then we submit to the state for redevelopment, that's where the information comes from, that Matt received the information through the document that we published for the state.
Now, this one, this one in particular, when we say two acres, if it includes two acres, includes the main street, we have to black that out.
Yeah, that's the smallest.
The dedication.
The dedication.
It does. It would become a smaller property.
What about doing a TOD along, you've also looked at our, our MetroLink, our MetroLink station behind us with the parking lot. We build this parking structures where in the future we'd be able to develop, you know, that site right, but, you know, we're, we're the part that parks now.
Yes, this is the art center right next to the art center.
I like that side. And you're talking about the lawn, it's, it's on.
Is that Metro?
It's a long metro.
I look at that side.
Right next to the, the art center and right next to the metro.
You know, from our perspective, we, I was born in Arcadia, I was in the same area, I love it, I know it really well. And we like Baldwin Park. And, you know, if you want to drive me out to another site, we're open. I think that this project on this site, I really think it's the right project for the site. And I think that if the city wants something larger and greater scale from the civic plaza standpoint, we have to bring the project down a little bit in size because we're gonna have to push it back and we're gonna need that part of it. Believe me, if I could go sub-grade, I'd do it, I'd just give them a, and then we're gonna bring it to the project.
Well, I would suggest if you could come back, we're looking at the two sites, possibly the one minus here where the metro parking is.
Okay.
But that's MetroLink all.
We don't own that.
Yeah, we do not own that.
MetroLink?
MetroLink also. We have, we have an agreement to provide parking against maintenance and entity, but we do not own this. Actually, we did talk to MetroLink as to what they would be, whether they'll be open actually to have a gentleman there to see what they're responsible for. And they told us very informally that they, if they want to discuss business, we would have to provide replacement parking for what is already on the site. So we didn't really pursue because they are in control of what can be done there.
See, they're in control.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
And you say the shopping center, which is a site seven, I believe.
Okay.
You said that you'd be interested in that site, I know that someone owns it, but you'd be interested in developing that site that's eight acres.
We love sites north of five acres, so the answer to that would be yes. But the problem is that there's just a multitude of leases in those areas, and we own shopping centers and trying to break those leases is very difficult.
There are leases, but there are, in half of the shopping centers vacant, most of it.
Right.
And I know that some of them are struggling to stay afloat. And I think that maybe the gentleman would be inclined to maybe not sell the whole eight acres, but maybe sell the, the portion of it that's not doing well.
Okay.
And we know at the burger places, you know, he's struggling to stay afloat. And, and we were talking, I was talking to the gentleman that owns it, and he was really exploring options because we feel that eventually this gentleman's gonna go out of business, and then what?
Yeah.
And so if you want, we could sit down and I can facilitate a meeting with this gentleman because it's one of the sites that I think we, I would like to see developed. And I think you guys like to see it developed. And it's been one of those, you know, eyesores that I just want to get rid of. And I think that that would be a really nice site because it faces Main Street, and that's what we're hoping to, to get businesses coming. We just had a, a street fair there, sort of like a street market or a farmer's market, because we want to bring interest to that Main Street. And so that would be an ideal location. I don't know if you guys agree, but.
He just lost, he just lost one of his biggest stores to another location here in Baldwin Park, so.
Oh, I see, lost five acres.
And now it's his largest store.
Right.
There's a Zumba Place, well, Firestone is at the far end, it's been there forever.
Yeah.
And the Dollar Tree.
But that's what I mean, if you exclude it, Firestone, because I think he did say he had like a ten-year lease or something, but it's just one corner of the, of the parcel.
Yeah, Firestone's a, I'll say, an alley and path too.
But if you, and I can see him being inclined to sell you the other side because, again, I sat down with him not too long ago and we were exploring ideas. And, and so I think I'd like to speak to you further about that side and how we make that happen.
Now, so, so is that, the Firestone owned by him or is that independent?
Yeah, he owns it, but he has a ten-year lease.
Yeah, he does, he has a ten-year lease.
So he can just, yeah, you would have to pay him out.
Yes.
But everything else, Fiasca de Dez is gone and, and all the other little ones, he's like leasing as he gets opportunities, but they're not permanent leasing.
And shops are pretty easy to, if they're monopod, if they're on a credit, they're pretty easy.
Oh, no, they are.
No, they're monopod.
They're very small, and like I said, some of them are just like a year lease, two years, because they're so unstable that, and again, they'll only be selling at the time. And I know we have so many things to cover, which you might sit down with me at a later time.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to, what I'd like to do, if you could come back to our next meeting, gave you a look at site four, the MetroLink. You know, there's a MetroLink parking, which is.
Oh, yeah.
We call it the MetroLink station.
Sure, I, I present a site plan there. I already did.
You got one?
Yeah.
And number six.
Bring that up.
Can you bring that next time?
Yeah, let's bring that next time.
If you could bring something on here, and then we'll just double first.
I have site plans on four and six.
If you could bring them and talk about.
Yeah, let's bring it.
This is Main Street, this is the test, I know there's a ponte here and a bathroom here. He's already looking at blocking because there's an opening here that opens to the Main Street, it would be a nice little pop.
Okay, let's go to call sessions, guys, we're gonna run out of time.
Hold on, sorry, thirty. So, so the direction is to bring him back, he has sites four and six. How long do we have?
I've only done, I've laid out one, four, and six.
So four and six.
So bring those back.
And then look, take a look, and you're gonna.
And also that would do and talk to you.
Do four and six, and if you could do something on seven, how long do we could do that, though? How long do you have left?
Which is seven, I don't know.
So it's.
I think that's possible.
So I appreciate that, and I'll definitely come back the next meeting.
Carter, which one's seven?
The furnace part of the six.
So what about one, though? Just curious.
I can tell you right now.
What about one?
Well, how about, real quick, how about, I don't know if it's a clear, that Big Delta one, that parcel we own there? Maybe joint that up with that second, being close to almost two acres. You know which one I'm talking about?
The Big Delta.
Yeah, that, we own a parcel, oh, that's a successor in agency.
Yeah, you can sell them.
It's empty.
No, because this is also a successor agency and we're getting close to get a release from the TUS.
Oh, you might want to look at that one, that's a Big Delta by Walmart.
And also, yeah, and also remember that we switched.
Yeah, I focus on those things.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, you're so far off that you wanna like boost downtown area versus that corner down.
Yeah, yeah.
But if, but you could align them, there's almost like close to two acres combined, there's an empty lot.
We're trying to build our downtown.
But I'm just saying as an option.
Yeah.
You might want to do multiple, multiple projects.
All right, thank you.
So the feedback on one, just to wrap up, so I understand, the feedback on one is looking for a six.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just, I'm pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Okay, so one's out.
Yes.
Or it could be revisited at another, at another day, possibly.
I don't think so.
And that's not possible.
She's very direct, too.
That's good.
I appreciate it, but you never know, civic centers are very expensive to build.
Something's already entered.
Okay. Listen, David, yes.
Yes. Do you have your card?
Yeah, good. All right, thank you very much for coming here.
Oh, guys, thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
All right, thank you.